Good evening, everyone. I'll call the Monday, September 21st, 2020 Order Commissioners Meeting into order. Normally we play our video, but we're having some technical difficulties this evening. So we're just gonna jump right into the meeting this evening. First item on the agenda is invocation and pledge of allegiance. I do not have anyone signed up tonight to deliver our invocation. Is there any members of the audience this evening that would like to come forward and deliver an invocation for us? If not, Mr. McCord, you want to do that?
All right. First off, I'd like to thank everybody for being here, everybody safe with all the trying times that we're going through, and thank the Father for all that. Make sure that we make wise decisions when we're up here governing the county and all that with the good fun times and trials and tribulations that we deal with with that. And prayers just to everybody out there, and everybody stay safe, as well as, you know, fighting everything against COVID, and pretty much that's it. Amen.
Amen. All right.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Quick on the spot. All right. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda tonight from any commissioners? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda then?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is public comment. Having Ms. Jamie Schwedler signed up this evening. Come on up, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I'm Jamie Schwedler, 301 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the Flora rezoning. We discussed at our hearing on June 22nd at length why the approval of the Flora rezoning is consistent with over 16 policies in your land use plan. Tonight, I just want to highlight two. First, our proposed density of 1.83 units per acre is consistent with the density in the full service area of the 2006 land use plan, which is three units per acre or less, and the Moyacque area policy emphasis, which stated that density like this was appropriate due to the level of growth that this area is sure to experience in the coming years. Second, that the adequate public facilities per year UDO will be decided at the special use permit stage, but even if evaluated now, our phasing schedule, which was discussed at the public hearing, means that no new students will be generated this school year or in the 2021 to 2022 school years, and only 17 new students would be generated in the 2022 school year, all in the current Shawboro Elementary School District. No students will be generated in the Moyacque Elementary School District for three years. We understand the ADM at Moyacque Elementary has fallen since the June 22nd hearing, and I believe you'll hear more from your staff on that tonight, and since that time, the Board of Education and this board have expressed an interest in expanding Moyacque Elementary and middle schools in the near term. Our phasing produces zero students for two school years. In year three, it directs growth to Shawboro, where capacity currently exists today, and this gives the county ample time to pursue school expansion at Moyacque Elementary in the meantime. Simply put, it provides moderate growth solutions to both housing and school needs in Moyacque. For these reasons, as well as the traffic and drainage improvements and policies stated at the June 22nd hearing, this zoning request is consistent with the county land use plan and is reasonable and in the public interest, and we request your vote to approve tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Mr. Olds?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Geez.
I'm here to speak a little on the Flora zoning case.
Be jumping to that. I need your name and address for the record, please.
Justin Olds, 131 Sprinkle Lane, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Back, back up. I'm here to speak a little on the Flora zoning case. It'll be back before you guys tonight. Typically, I don't speak, however, felt it a little bit necessary to express my excitement and recognize the hard work that's gone into this project, not only from the county staff and team, but from our team as well. It's been a long process with many hurdles. I think everybody's done a fantastic job mitigating concerns that have presented themselves to us along the way. From the beginning, we've done what we said, which is listen to the county and provide solutions, all while keeping Currituck County progressing forward in a responsible way. I think we can mostly agree that development and county progression overall is a good thing when it's done properly. With this project, we've done everything we can to make it consistent with all the existing county plans and fill the growing need for housing and future commercial in the Moyacque area while being conscious of the surrounding communities. Not only as a developer, but as a member of the community myself, I want to be a part of the solutions for Currituck County's growth, and here's an opportunity to offset some of the growth constraint by providing utility upgrades, drainage improvements, school sites, and phasing on how this project can be built out over the years to come with unnecessary burden on existing facilities. The drainage improvements we've committed to previously and fostered are well over a million dollars. That's money the county doesn't have to spend to fix existing drainage problems in this area or worry with ongoing maintenance of these problems. We'll take care of that as well. The Flora Development continues these commitments with drainage and infrastructure improvements, which provide additional needed relief for existing residents of Eagle Creek and Ranchland. This approval will also allow for perpetual drainage maintenance in an area for decades that has suffered from flooding with no financial burden to taxpayers. These offers and commitments will help hundreds of Currituck County residents finally mitigate some of their drainage nightmares, and in our opinion, these among our other commitments made are far above what any developer has offered in the county that's seeking approval. Again, I feel it's a fair statement to say that we have done much more due diligence, planning, on and off-site commitments than any other developer in Moyacque thus far. We know there are hurdles when it comes to development. However, I hope it's clear that we are being a huge part of the solution, not just adding to the problem. Between the positive comments we are offering, or positive commitments we are offering, along with knowing we will create hundreds and hundreds of jobs in the county, we hope our efforts have earned your approval tonight. We look forward to working with you on this project.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I do not have anyone else signed up this evening. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this, or speak to public comment tonight? All right. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Next item this evening is the Commissioner's report. I guess the best news to hit Currituck in the last week is the Knott's Island Ferry's back open, as everyone is well aware of. I'm sure several people know that, you know, the Board of Commissioners obviously supported that through our resolution. We made a bunch of telephone calls just to various people throughout the state, but a big shout out needs to go to Bobby Hennig, Representative Hennig. He was relentless in his efforts to get that ferry up and running again, and definitely was the cause of that happening. So if you see him, thank him. He was a huge part of it, and I just want to commend him for that and his efforts. He also had a conversation with him a little while ago. He spoke with Senator Tillis's staff today. As you know, there was a moratorium on offshore drilling. President Trump announced that during one of his speeches, and that has come to an end, and he's added back-end states to continue that. Senator Tillis has spoken with President Trump, and we will be included in that. So the moratorium extending offshore drilling will continue here in North Carolina for the time being. And just a note to the board and anyone listening, I won't be at our next meeting. I will be traveling with my family for a couple of weeks on vacation, and so I will have to miss next meeting and see you all at the meeting after that. With that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Pamp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of updates from the Alamo Regional Health. Just give you some current statistics. Currituck County currently, as of today's report, had 166 total reported cases. Forty-nine are still active. 116 have recovered, and Currituck finally, well, finally, it's unsaid, I hate to say finally, but they did have a death in Currituck County, and that was with the Currituck House, one of the residents right there succumbed to the virus. Also, as a note, as far as the flu vaccination, some of you out there go to the Health Department to get your flu shots. The Health Department put in their order for flu vaccine back last March. That's how early they put their orders in. They were delayed. They usually have mine now. They're expecting to have them within the next week. They'd asked that you just call ahead to make sure they do have the flu vaccination in, but by the end of September, they said they should have plenty available, but there was a big demand from the federal government with the flu vaccination, so it has depleted a little bit of supplies to be delivered out to the, distributed to the Health Department, so that was a little bit of delay there. So just a call in advance, but it should be ready for you by the end of September, and that's all I had for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Rathers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, yesterday, I finally got to get on that ferry and ride over to Knox Island. It was windy, but it was certainly beautiful. The ferry's been closed since April the 1st, and I just can't imagine what the people in Knox Island have been through. So as our chairman said, we certainly want to thank our representatives, Representative Hennig and Senator Steinberg, but especially our own Bobby Hennig. He told me he was making so many phone calls that they finally just opened it up to get rid of him. Also, another thing that's getting ready to happen, folks, it is tis the season. Operation Santa Claus is starting back up. Social Service will be sending out the letters for their sponsors and donors, and we hope that you will support this worthy cause. You can go to the email operation.santa@curritucknc.gov or call the Social Service office at 252-232-3083, and please support this worthy cause. There are a lot of people out there hurting this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bama?
No comments tonight.
Thank you. Mr. McCord?
I hit a personal one. Tomorrow's my anniversary. I'd like to wish my wife happy anniversary. Yeah, I don't know if I'm zoomed in on the TV, but I have a nasty spot on my forehead due to my job. I'm not a battered spouse, so let me go and put that out there. Got some stitches on my forehead yesterday. But like I said, that's it on the personal thing, so like I said, I just wanted a happy anniversary to my wife, and I'm not a battered spouse, but the Knott's Island Ferry, Bobby Hennig gets stuff done. I mean, I picked up Bobby Hennig signs, and I'm not trying to make political statements or whatever, but if you call Bobby Hennig and say you need something at 7:00 AM, it's there at 7:00 AM. That guy's a worker. He does a phenomenal job. I'm just amazed at how much stuff he gets done for Currituck County Dare and our district. Bobby is just, he's a doer, so I know the people in Knott's Island are super happy. It's awesome to see that ferry moving. I know all those guys and gals that work on the ferry do a great job, and a couple of them told me they were so over being in hatters working that they were so stoked to be back. That and just a lot of stuff going on, you know, in the community. Follow your social media and the county website for positive stuff, not negative, and that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Rathers?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I agree with everybody on the Knott's Island Ferry, and I would like to see us adopt the resolution of appreciation to Senator Steinberg, also Representative Ed Goodwin, because he worked with them on it, and especially Bobby Hennig, and we present them with a formal resolution of appreciation for their efforts.
I think we can make that a reality.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jarvis?
And I just want to mention that on September 17th, 1787, our founding fathers approved the Constitution in the miracle at Philadelphia, and that was 233 years ago last Thursday. And I hope as we move into the election season, you're already seeing signs up and down the county. I hope that people will appreciate the freedom we have to choose our elected officials, the privilege we have to be self-governed. If you're not registered to vote, do so. That deadline is fast approaching, and discuss with people, do your research, and make good decisions, because our country is only good as the decisions we make and who governs us. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one other thing before we jump to the next one, or maybe two, made me think about it. Mr. Kitty did. We haven't talked about whether or not we're going to do any kind of holiday parade, tree lighting, or anything this year, so I guess we need to have a chat with the county manager at some point about what Christmas in Currituck's going to look like this year. Maybe not put you on the spot right this minute, but just...
I've already bought a Christmas tree.
Sweet. That's the answer we were looking for. All right, so...
Sounds like we got a parade.
Sounds like we got a parade. Okay. And then lastly, just remember, remind the board, so you make sure you turn your mics on as you come in front of your mic or speak. We've had some complaints that we just forget to do it while we're doing it, so just a little reminder, and other than that, I will turn it over to the county manager for the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. I wanted to give the board a piece of good news. We received some information a little while back, and it was finalized. There was a gentleman by the name of Sheldon Metcalf, who actually named the Wellhead Club in his estate, and so we will be receiving a check in the amount of $121,000, 121,371.05, to be exact. So we have received, yeah. So on top of that, Dr. Metcalf also wrote a textbook, and he listed us as one of the partial receiver of royalties from that textbook, so as that moves forward, that superintendent's here, so hopefully he heard that. So, wanted to give an update on just some advisory board stuff that will be coming in front of the board over the next little bit. Crowver Roads has gotten a plan together for trying to find material to do road improvements, so we'll be coming to the board in a work session, first meeting in October probably to talk through that. Then we will also be talking about a summary of the discussion about the 500-year storm BMPs that was directed by the board in January, so we'll bring that, the first meeting in October, to a work session to go over just what the public said. We had that public meeting, stakeholder meeting, to kind of hear what were the thoughts on that. And we are also, the planning department is also putting together and collecting surveys and scheduling meetings with all of the campgrounds that came out of the June meeting, where we discussed, I think it was June 22nd, so we'll be bringing that, hopefully that information to the board the second meeting in October. And I don't normally do this kind of thing, but I wanted to take a second and read an email from a citizen about one of our staff members, just because everyone wants good to hear some good news. So specifically, it's about the Crowver Roads. We have an engineering tech, his name is Nick Ingold, and Nick has put in yeoman's work to try to do a study out there to see where sand can come from. And so this is from actually one of the advisory board members, Mr. Gillum. So said, "I would personally acknowledge a recent work assignment that Nick Ingold completed and presented to the Crowver Road Advisory Board this week. Nick was assigned a work scope to identify community sand deposits in Crowver that could be used in road maintenance projects in an ongoing effort to improve area roads. Nick took the assignment and began researching the entire area for any and all sand deposits. I noticed him working early in the mornings, late afternoons, and weekends with his surveying equipment, walking the roads, ditches, and smaller sand hills along the sand road. After a short couple of months, Nick produced an extremely thorough report identifying all sand deposits, including cubic yardage calculations of each sand deposit. He presented his report to the Crowver Road Advisory Board on Wednesday in a complete and concise manner while giving a buffet list of options where sand could be recovered. His study will be used in the upcoming bid process." And he goes on to say, "We don't always take the time to acknowledge superior work. Nick did a great job. I wanted to make sure you were aware when an employee far exceeds expectations in their job assignment."
Right.
I try to forward those to the board when I get them. I don't always read them in meetings, and that might be something that I start to do a little bit, just so folks hear, you know, all of the really positive things that the staff that works tirelessly does. You know, we've had comments on EMS in the last month. We've had comments on tourism staff. I mean, we've got a really great group of people that work here. I know you all recognize that. They appreciate everything that you all do for them and the guidance that you all have. I appreciate that guidance, and I appreciate the hard work that they put in. With that, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else.
Thank you. All right. Next up is old business. Item A, PB 19-20, Florida Farm, rezon of 224.44 acres from ag to planned development residential for property located in Moyacque immediately south of Eagle Creek subdivision at Moyacque Middle School. Request includes 285 single-family dwelling lots, and up to 100,000 square foot commercial, 125 upper-story dwellings, and a 22-acre school site. And we have heard this before, as it said, it's old business. Seen the presentation. Have you had maybe a couple remarks or no?
Yeah, just as a refresher, the board, I'm sure remembers the case. If you remember, the time we tabled it, because there was some conversation about the school board maybe changing the way that they calculated school capacities. Just as an update, they did not change that school capacity, but we did send out the most recent ADMs to the board and to the applicant for this project as well. With that, staff is available for any questions that you all may have.
Okay.
Can you, or would you have to open up the P? If you said that the stuff that we sent out, we got in the email, that's the ADM for it?
Yes, sir.
When was that?
September. I mean, I think it was as of last Friday.
Yeah.
And that's as recent as I can get it, so the... As a side note, I'd like to give props to the new superintendent. He's extremely responsive anytime that we request information. That's a good example. We requested it on Thursday, and I mean, by the time that, I don't know if we even asked for it until Friday, he got it to us that same day, but that's the numbers that you have. Commissioner McCord?
Okay. Any other questions of staff, or we have the applicant here. It's a little bit of a big decision. If anyone has any questions from the applicant?
I have a couple.
Okay. Do you need a marker?
Oh, my mic was off. Sorry about that. The acreage we had talked about before, and I'm just like, I looked at the previous notes, is 22 acres, and I know we kept talking school site, school site, school site. I guess this is directed towards, I guess, Bissell's the engineer, so, or to Justin, either or. I mean, if it's...
Mark, come on up. Catch him on the mic.
And before you ask that, we do have the presentations from the last time and this time, in case you'd like to key up or see anything again.
Okay.
But it'll take me a second to get to it if you want to.
Thank you.
This, I mean, this, my question, this one, was kind of a little bit different since it was, things have been different since the previous dual meeting we had with the school board and ourselves. The 22 acres designated for the school site, I mean, is that like locked in stone? I know we had talked about expansion and stuff like that. I mean, could that be something, would y'all entertain possible fire sta... I mean, I'm throwing this out there, you know, if it was, yeah, something like that, or, I mean, is that something that y'all could change if it was?
It could be a school site. It could be, it could be for other government facilities or public safety, any of those uses we think would be compatible and acceptable on the site.
So any legitimate governmental use?
Yes, I think we could state it that way.
What's, and let me ask one more question on this, kind of a piggyback off of that one. If, I mean, like, we had the joint meeting where we talked about school expansions that made the daily advance, that kind of made it official. The, and since Doc, this question might be for more Dr. Lutz or Mark or both, is there a minimum square footage of like acreage, I know for like an elementary school, because I know like the different ones that we have in the county. I know Griggs is a lot smaller, that site compared to Jarvisburg with the ball fields and stuff like that. Is there a minimum acreage like the state recommends if it was 15 acres for a school and five acres for a fire station or a convenience site or something like that, or is there a minimum acreage that either you gentlemen are aware of?
Yeah, so there's a recommended acreage, and I'm going to look to the superintendent to correct me when I get off base. It's a base number of acres, and then for every so many kids, it adds an acre. I want to say it's, I want to say, is it 15 acres to start with, and then it adds for every 250 kids, it adds an acre?
I think that's what it is.
I think, but don't, I'd have to pull it up, but it's something close to that.
I was just curious if it was like a multi-use thing where we could, and 20, it was, I know it's, it was 20, it was 30, it was 25. 22 is the number.
22 is the number that I think that we were given by the study committee of the ideal acreage.
Yeah, I think it came out of, Stefanik came out with that number as a recommended...
I think the 22 acres is based on that formula, the recommendation from DPI, Department of Public Instruction.
That's right, okay. I'm just refreshing my brain.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question while we're talking about that? Is that predicated on on-site septic or hooking into a regional septic system or sewer system?
So I will tell you that in my opinion, I'm going to assume that that's based on septic, because, I mean, there's schools that are built in downtown Raleigh that have nowhere near 22 acres, but then there are schools that are built in rural North Carolina that have 50 acres, so I think that, I think that's septic. You probably could fit more on a site that had sewer. For an elementary school, as you get in some of the other schools, they have athletic fields that go along, and I'm outside of my base of knowledge a little bit there.
Okay.
I know we, I mean, we got the email and all the other stuff, the ADMs. I had to just jot down some notes, but the main thing was the acreage, and if we did school expansions, that, I wasn't sure if it was 22 or 25. I couldn't remember the acreage numbers. I was just, but you addressed that on 15 would be the minimum.
I think it's 15, to start with, it's 15, and then I think it's, I think it's one acre for every 100 kids. I think that's the number. So sit here and think about it and do the math. So it's 15 acres plus seven, because we had projected a 750-kid school, so that's 15 plus seven. Gets you to 22. Did I do the math right?
I don't know.
I think so.
That's too fast for me.
Point five, I mean, we'll...
Yeah, with the point five, you don't trigger the next acre till you get to the next 100 is the way that they do it, so.
Okay. Anything further for the applicant from the board? Mr. Bissell, do you have anything to add? I know Ms. Schwedler came up, a public comment, but certainly I'll give you a few minutes.
Well, we did offer the comment at the last, at the last public hearing, like it was comment O that we had offered to add. It was a commitment that the use permit for the three phases that are in the Moyacque Elementary School District would not be applied for until at least January of 2022, and that's the schedule that results in first possible students being in houses occupied within that school district for the 2023, 2024 school year. And I think for that year, the number was 11, and the previous year was only 17, and those were all Shawboro, so that was the condition that we offered that still stands.
Okay.
So that was 2022 with 17 kids at Shawboro?
Correct. First student showing up in 2023 for Moyacque. And that was only 11.
How about if, like, the expansion, if we went with the expansion and not the site, or we had a fire station there or something like that? When would, and I looked at the emails and the notes from the last stuff, because that was a long night. What was the number on the, the, how many kids would go to Moyacque Elementary School, and when would they start there? That was the number I wanted to ask.
That was the, well, the 2023-24 school year was the, is the first year they would be there, and that was the 11 students that I was...
Okay.
Yeah.
That was all I had.
I think that in the 2024 year was up to 18 students.
So, we know where they're at today, and relative to next school year, it looks like Moyacque Elementary is... for the 2023, 2024 school year. And I think for that year, the number was 11. And the previous year was only 17, and those were all Shawboro. So that would be a condition that we offered that still stands.
Okay.
So that was 2022 with 17 kids at Shawboro?
Right. First student showing up in 2023 for Moyack. And that was only 11.
Right.
How about if, like, the expansion, far as if we went with the expansion and not the site, or we had a fire station there or something like that? When would, and I looked at the emails and the notes from the last stuff, because that was a long night. What was the number on the... How many kids would go to Moyack Elementary School, and when would they start there? That was the number I wanted to ask.
That was the, well, the 2023, 24 school year was the, is the first year they would be there. And that was the 11 students.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was all I had.
And I think that in the 2024 year was up to 18 students.
So we know where they're at today. And relative to next school year, it looks like Moyack Elementary is 60 over. And Shawboro is, has a total of 28 students coming in, or potentially 28 extra students at Shawboro before their at capacity. So my question is, that's probably to Lori, of the subdivisions that are currently working, and I'd use FOST as an example, how many more students? I guess is FOST all going to Shawboro?
Yes, that was the FOST all going to Shawboro, yes.
Okay, and so how many are going to be in Shawboro? Because that capacity needs to be, it's fine to look at each one of these separately, but the reality is we have other subdivisions that are going to start populating schools.
So FOST is 479, and generally our rule of thumb, our multiplier is .5. So we're looking, for 20, sorry, for elementary schools, .25. So for each lot is a quarter of an elementary school student. Sorry.
So it's a little over 100?
100 kids.
100 kids.
And that's on the FOST track? And do we know where they're going yet?
That's all, that's all Shawboro.
Shawboro.
Yeah, they are all...
It's good to say that Shawboro will be over capacity.
Well, the numbers we get are committed capacity at this point, right? When you, when you, when staff, when you guys prepare this report for us, it is committed capacity now, and then the extra capacity, right?
Well, we give you what the ADM is, the capacity now. And we also, in the staff report, is also the committed capacity.
Right, right, so you can see that future determination.
Yeah. So the report we got from Donna, right? Which I don't know if that, that report got reflected or is reflective of Donna's updated ADM numbers as of last week, is what I just quoted.
Okay.
So we got 60 kids over at Moyack right now.
Right now, right.
And we have 28 till max capacity, until capacity at Shawboro. So if we add 100 kids out of this, out of the FOST track, we're... Again, this is based on the numbers that we've been provided by the school board. That doesn't take into account any sliding the lines or whatever. So then the next question is, the expansions will come online, is it August of 23?
Rough estimate would be August of 23, yes, sir.
Which is the 23, 24 school year?
Yes, sir.
And that added how many to Moyack?
11. Our project?
No, you're asking how many the expansion adds. Give me a second, let me pull it up.
727?
Give me a second, let me, yeah, let me pull it up.
And while he's pulling that up, what other subdivisions are going to contribute students to Moyack Elementary or would, if they could, that are out there and committed?
I need, yeah, I understand what you're saying. We still have build out for Waterly, Glenmore Ridge. Panther Landing is out there as well with their use permit. I can...
I need a, I need a rough guess as to how many students Moyack Elementary is going to see by already committed subdivisions. Agreed?
Yeah, I can see where you're going, yeah.
In other words, if we just look at this as a snapshot, that's all fine and dandy, except there's a bunch of other students that are in the pipeline, or houses that are in the pipeline that are going to contribute.
Well, that's where the committed comes in, because that has been factored in each time we've approved a neighborhood. That has been added on, stacked on.
Agreed, agreed.
But it's not actual yet.
Right, right, that's the paper case.
Commissioner Jarvis has a...
Oh, look at her, she's on...
The number that I got in the meeting was the expansion at Moyack Elementary would get the capacity to 737. If you kept the mobile units, it would be near 800.
And so that added approximately 200 seats.
Okay.
How many kids are there now? 590 something? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
About 600.
Right, just basically 600.
Okay. That adds seats, but does that add capacity? And that's for Dr. Lutz. Kind of alluded. Here's, I pulled the pin, tossed you the grenade, now you've got to figure out what to do with it.
Does the expansion add capacity?
Or how, what percentage of the, what expansion of seats adds to the capacity? Because it's not one for one, is what we've been told. Let me try to rephrase that question. So in the past, we've been told, just because you can sit a student, doesn't mean you've added capacity to the school. And I'll use lunchroom facilities, playground facilities, whatever. There are other stressors to a school capacity rather than space in a classroom. So just because we add brute numbers, because that's kind of a mistake we, the county, have made over the years, is that we look at, there are 30 chairs in this classroom, times 20 classrooms, there should be 600 students. Did I do that right? Yes. So, but Mark Stefanik would bring up, just because we can add, just because we have a classroom, doesn't mean that all of those 30 seats turn into capacity of the school. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Do you have any concerns with a one-to-one, is what I'm asking? We add 200 seats during expansion.
Add to the, I thought you answered your question correctly. The answer is yes, because we're expanding cafeteria.
So cafeteria, playground, all that expands with the capacity, okay?
Yes. With the planned expansion.
Got it.
Commissioner Beaumont, in regards to your other question, if you take out the FOST planned development of 479, we're still over 900 lots in the Moyack Township? And, sorry, that's not, that's a rough number, but it's still over 900 lots with the potential for a house to be built on in the Moyack Township?
So .25.
.25? That's a lot of kids.
How many, but, and speaking of FOST, like, he brought up, isn't FOST, FOST is phase 2, if I'm not mistaken?
It is. It's phased over several years.
So if something happened and we hit a, and I'm not, like I said, Beaumont's line of kids falling out the window at the school.
I didn't say that.
I know you said it eight meetings ago, or nine maybe. But, I mean, like I said, if something like that, I mean, if something's phased, I mean, you know, we would just say, hey, you're not starting phase 3 or whatever, 2. I mean, we have, would have, I mean, like we did at, what's the one in Moyack, the barber shop? Windswept. We didn't approve phase, was it 2 or 3 for the, 3 for the adequate public facilities?
I...
A lot of the other projects are phased as well that are...
If I remember correctly, and I'll look to Lori or Mark, either one, to jump in here if I'm wrong. Windswept, I think, was an entirely new addition to the use permit. It was called phase, I can't remember the number, but it actually were lots that weren't part of the initial use permit. So I guess you're, I guess what you're saying, in order to have control over phases coming in, then those individual phases would have to be the use permits that come in as part of the preliminary plat? But I don't think that's typically how we operate.
Well, Windswept, I'll specifically talk about Windswept. There was an additional 14 lots, was it, Mr. Bissell? I think that were, that came in, that were not part of the original rezoning, and it came before you to add that to the rezoning for Windswept. And that was where this was probably one of the first instances we had issues with adequate public, Moyack Elementary School. And so that was speaking specifically of that. So without the rezoning, it never came back to you for a use permit for their preliminary plat. So it stopped at the rezoning.
Okay. I mean, the phasing, does the, I mean, and, maybe I'm green on this, but I mean, does the phase, I mean, the phasing, so that was not on the original, which I did, we weren't up here. I wasn't up here, and I don't think anyone was when Windswept was first started.
So I guess, so to get back to kind of your original point, Commissioner McCord, in order for you to have control over the phases and say this phase could not move forward because there's not adequate public facilities.
That's where I'm going with that.
You would have to approve the use permit one phase at a time. And I don't, like, preliminary plats would have to be done, each phase would have to be its own preliminary plat under our UDO. And I think, I think I got that right. And I'm going to look over to the folks to my left to make sure I'm not misrepresenting anything, but does that accurate?
Yes.
Also, you can also incorporate phasing, right, into a use permit?
You can, so, as part of this, you can say that these things can't happen until a certain date. I guess you're, and then the next question, kind of logically, is can you say these things can't happen unless there's adequate public facilities? I, I don't know.
I mean, I would show something down, wouldn't it?
Well, they would, but, and that's what they originally proffered, was to have the phase scheduling plan so that they could control how the children impacted, or potential kids would impact our school system. They were, they were offering that as a way of phasing and control. So they've covered 50% of that, I guess, right? The other side of it is, if the schools aren't ready yet and the kids are hitting them, then we've run up against that dam at that point in time. And it looks like we'll be, well, Moyack will be, but Moyack's really not in play for FOST. It's really Shawboro, or Flor, excuse me, that's the problem, which is basically where you're headed, right? That we only have 28 until we hit the high watermark there. And then we start, do we, do we have room for trailers there at that school if we had to expand?
Shawboro?
Yeah.
It's, we're looking at that. That one's a little more problematic if you don't have the land and some of the regulations just are prohibited.
If I could clarify something?
Sure, please. Sorry, I couldn't see you behind Mark back there.
That's okay. Just based on the email that was distributed yesterday, the 2020 school capacity is 641, and the September ADM was 594. So we're talking about 46 or so seats for this year. And then it would drop to the 622, where we get to the 28 seats for next year. But the difference between what we're talking about with FOST and the difference with these 800 lots that are in the Moyack Township is that we're restricting ourselves to trace the pattern of growth. So I don't think it's appropriate to compare it to lots that could be developed, because they would have to come forward, most likely come forward to you in the same use permit, and you could decide at that time whether there was to be...
They're already approved. That's, that's the problem. If you have 900 lots that could get built on tomorrow.
Right, just need to pull a permit.
If people bought the houses, which clearly, that's out there.
Do they have special use permits approved for all of them?
No, they're not, they're past the special approval permits. Their subdivisions are approved with those lots. And that's, so the challenge the county's had over the years is planning has tracked potential school expansion, and we had numbers from the school system which didn't always, we're now trying to get that so that they agree.
Right.
So...
And a potential for growth, right? There was a rate of development that was understood, and that obviously in the last year has, the last two years really, has just blown us out of the water. So we're, we're dealing with a different animal than we were two years ago or three years ago. And I appreciate your comments that the attendance dropped down, but that's a, but probably directly attributable to COVID and parental response to that, and...
It was actually higher in August, and then it dropped again in September.
Right, so we've got, we've got something going on there. But that number, I think, is a little bit too much of a moving target for us to say, okay, it's down here. Because I'm pretty sure that that's going to change if we get, a vaccine comes through, when the schools reopen. I mean, there's a lot of factors that are going to affect that number. But I think it's important that the board not get hung up on Moyack Elementary per se, because we're really not talking about that. We're really talking about Shawboro. And then, of course, that's up to the school board, how they move lines around if they decide to do that at any point in time to alleviate pressures there. But then that just goes right to Central, which is starting slowly to fill up as well, so. Yeah, I just don't want it to get mired down on MEC for, for really, at this point in time, not much of a reason. We're talking 11 kids in the next four years impacting that school with...
But, and again, and I would argue Moyack is not necessarily, with this subdivision, my raging concern. My raging concern is the 900 lots out there that, you know, one of the options open to the school board is shifting, shifting the lines. Now, we're all over Shawboro. So who can I ask that, that's not Johnis, but, okay, Justin, you're up.
And just with respect to that, you know, you all have the control to move us forward with special use permits, but it's just the rezoning. And so even if those lots are coming through, the time that we've restricted ourselves to it matters.
Could I ask Lori two questions? How many of those lots have been on the books over five years?
I don't have that right here in front of me, but we have several that are built out, but we also have a significant number that are coming on right now. And I could, I don't have that information by year.
Safe to say a lot of them?
Some of them.
Okay, second, when was that list updated?
This list was updated probably last year.
How many closings have we had since that's been updated?
How many?
Closings of housing that are on that list have occurred in kids registered at school since that's been updated? So is it fair to say, back to my point, that that's an inaccurate list?
Well, potentially.
Okay, fair enough.
So I see what you're saying. Did some of those have been developed out at this point in time?
They, I've got the list myself. And is it also fair to say that that list is compiled of subdivisions in any stage, not just use permits?
Built out and final plat, preliminary plat, it's all...
Committed lot, the committed capacity, and the email we received said it was lots in any stage.
Any stage of approval, so that goes from a zoning.
Not use permit, next.
Or...
Okay, sorry.
Preliminary plat, which would be a use permit, and after that would be construction drawings. You all, once you issue the preliminary plat use permit, then the construction drawings and final plat would go to staff. So some of these are already built out. We do have final plat for several of them, and construction drawings for several of them, so.
So I guess 900 is a bit of a nebulous number, but somewhere, it, there's still going to be a significant number of homes.
Yes.
At this point in time.
I do agree it's a significant number of homes, but I would also agree it's grossly inaccurate after looking at the list and knowing demographically these neighborhoods and what stages are they in, being in it every day. Some of them neighborhoods have been on the books for years and years and years with no sense of being developed. And that's, that's an inaccurate, it's an inaccurate spreadsheet.
To some degree, and as I stated earlier, we experienced a growth change too, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
That's a factor we have to think about, and we really have to think about now. And if that continues over the next four or five years, which you hope happens, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I, and, you know, and I think, again, back to the phasing, I think we've done a pretty, pretty good job with the information we were given as well, is trying to stage these things in a way that they weren't such a burden on the schools. And if it's, if we need to flip the phasing to do Moyack, since it seems that's going to have capacity, substantial capacity pretty soon, then we do the phases that are in Moyack as opposed to what we had anticipated.
Just some clarification questions, then. We are looking at, right now, approving a rezoning.
That's it.
Okay, after this, whether, whichever way this goes, the next stage then would be the process for the special use where you would, at that, I mean, theoretically, again, just hypothetically, the developer could just walk away from this, change the development, come with something totally different, more heavier commercials, something different for us to look at. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so whether this gets approved or not today, you're still going to be coming for us on a special, or somebody will, for special use, that we have to decide at that point what we want to do, the criteria, staging, you know, look at the kids' capacity at that point and where we're at, we're building. Could you, the special use permit could come a year from now? Again, it could, two years from now, 30 days, whenever. Is that correct?
That's correct, that's 100% correct, yes, we could.
I guess I just want some clarity, thank you.
So to piggyback on that a little bit, so your reason is where you control your density. If we approve this for Justin and his company, when he comes for the use permit, you're basically, at that point, if he meets his four findings of fact, you're not... you're not really controlling a whole lot other than the conditions within that and phasing. Right, but the, the damage is done if you're, if you're looking at keeping density down. At that point in time, it's basically over with because your controls are, right? Yeah. Okay, so.
What was the density at 1.8 something?
Three.
I think it's 1.83.
Okay. Which, what's the density in Eagle Creek? 1.5 something, 1.7? I'm just pairing apples to apples.
Well, and FOST was up there.
Yeah, FOST was what, 1.? I don't know, I'm, I'm throwing something.
And that's as opposed to what it's currently zoned out, which is three on a, on a ag?
Yes.
That's three per.
It's three acres per dwelling, you know, essentially.
I would say that's including the upper story dwellings, the rear of the project at 285 are roughly a half acre lots.
Right, right, yeah. The, the house lots are much, much bigger.
Exactly.
Yep, yep, somewhat misleading. Okay.
I have a sort of a comment or question for Lori. We're all talking about schools, but there's an impact of more than just schools. I think we're stressing a lot. If you add that many people, you're going to impact not only the services here for the county, D O T. And when I was reading over what was sent to us, it says that the Moyoc Farms now will go through the FOST track. Is that correct? And that'll add like 300 trips per day?
Yes, with their traffic impact study that the applicant completed, they did look at that 300 additional or 310. It's for each individual home, it's about, the rule of thumb is 10 trips per day for a single family home. So that would add 300, about 310 trips per day to the, to the traffic impact. They looked at that and you, in, in your staff report, we did mention the significant change and some issues that could come out of.
And also with the school being put in this area, that would increase traffic too. So it seems like to me we're just concentrating on, on schools, but there's a whole lot of other impacts to the community that we need to consider also.
That, that is correct. I mean, adequate public facilities, I think it says including but not limited to schools, you know, water and sewer infrastructure, fire, employee, law enforcement. So it's not just schools, but schools are the easy one because we, there's a number. There's a capacity number and then there's a multiplier number that we have that we know what's going to be generated. But there are other impacts, yes.
8,380 daily external trips.
So in going down that path, one of the four conditions is public safety, correct? Adequate public facilities is one of the four conditions?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm a little disappointed that our stats on the schools are not more current than a year in what's built out and what's not built out. And, and, you know, and I agree, there's a lot at risk. And, you know, one of them is we have, is Larry still here or he ducked out?
Larry Lynn, I think.
Unbelievable. In conversations with him, you know, some of the things that help with what most folks want, and that's increased commercial, increased restaurants, increased everything above. You know, there are rooftops and that's, that's true, but suspending development is not going to be good for long-term planning. I'm. So I guess my comment is we have a fallback with public safety and adequate public facilities in the conditional use permit as well.
Right.
So this does not prevent us from being able to do that. I, I maintain and have maintained, I am not, I, I am concerned about the schools and the plan going forth with that. And I think I've been pretty darn straight with that. And, you know, I'm not, I'm still not comfortable with, with where our school plan is. And, you know, my only comment to you would be there is a risk that this, if it were to get passed and it does get rezoned, there's a risk you come in for a use permit and it's denied because we're not where we need to be from a schooling plan. And that's, and I think most of this board has been of that, you know, we don't want, you know, a developer to jump through hoops for a losing proposition and not be able to get to where they need to be. And that's, that's my opinion.
Mr. Bissell, do you have something?
I just brought up a copy of the addition to the traffic report that we had prepared in response to the question about Moyoc Farms traffic coming through. And this was actually provided, submitted in connection with that project. But the conclusion was that the original recommendations for the intersection remain the same and no impacts are expected on the surrounding roadway network from this addition of site traffic on the FOST Boulevard.
I, I actually spoke to him about that explicit issue and that's exactly what I said, it's consequential.
But would you agree though, when you talk about between FOST Flora and Moyoc Farms, you're talking about 14,658 additional trips? That while it may not be consequential adding that, the total number is something that our current infrastructure and even with FOST Boulevard, I just don't see how that area, it says in the report that it would be level of service E. And I would just ask the members of the Board of Commissioners to look please on page 241, if you haven't, what that looks like. There's a picture in there that shows you level of service E. That's what it looks like down by my house in summer when, on a Saturday when traffic stopped. And that, that's a concern. I just, right now, I know where Survey Road is and the fact that that area is going to have 14,658 additional trips. Just, I just, I just think that's overwhelming.
Yeah, I just mentioned two things about that. One is the, the peak level of, the level of service is only during the morning peak hour. And number two, the level of service was not based on the picture that you see in the staff report. It was based on what the length of the weight, the weight is to, to turn on to.
But is it also not true that the addition of, if that is a school site, that 22 acres, that's not even included in that, am I right?
That's correct.
Okay.
But we can't really include that.
I know, I know, and I read that.
We don't know.
But it's, it's still, it's just an extra.
What the use of the site is going to be or what the driveway configuration is.
It's an extra pressure.
And that level of service in the report was, was speaking greatly towards the commercial being fully built out, 100,000 square foot commercial build out. Is that correct?
Yes, I understand that.
Let me ask you a question then on that. When would you anticipate those 14,000 trips a day? When would we reach that number?
Years.
Yeah, our phasing plan didn't even have the commercial starting for about, like, four, five years.
Yeah, so 10 years, maybe longer. I mean, the commercial is what the, the contributing factor to the majority of those trips per day was. I mean, and that, that was the bulk of it, it was full commercial build out. And it's ambiguous at that point too, because they're, they're assuming certain retailers being in there. So, and, and obviously a gas station and a jeans store have different traffic counts. So it's, 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 it's a number simply to, to, to give a basis of what the delay at that light will be. And the, the staff report pictures were, were again inaccurate to what that, our report from V H B and N C D O T based it off of.
What's the map? So what's the, what the?
Service level?
Depends on the time of year.
Yeah, Saturday and Sunday were quite a F.
But I mean, that's just a longer delay at the lights in Moyoc. I mean, that's all that is, is saying that level of E, I think it said it went to a 30 second delay at that stoplight is why it's considered a E. It didn't, it doesn't mean that the roads are falling apart and those sort of things. It's simply a traffic delay at a light.
I have a question for either the county attorney or Lori. If D O T says a road can handle the traffic, do we have the ability to question that and deny based on that?
Well, at this stage, legislative decision, you can take into consideration any information. Getting into a use permit quasi judicial proceeding, you're going to have to rely upon expert, a testimony of an expert. I guess in transportation engineering to make your finding a fact relative to that issue.
So they're only discussing usage and they would have to produce an act or to show the traffic.
They, they would have to do that to meet, to meet their burden and then those in opposition, assuming they have met their burden, would have to do likewise.
And, and actually, let me, I'm just reading the report. It actually said that the, the peak, P in traffic would be a D. The peak A in traffic would be a C.
Which is driver comfort four, right?
Four, yep.
And that is just for the eastbound lane, the other ones are a B.
So we're aiming for a B at all times, but that's not a reality of life. Okay, anything further from the board at this time? Anything from you guys? We'll wrap it up here.
Just that the, the land use plan density would actually allow up to 673 units on the site. So we are actually 263 units less than the, than the land use plan allows. And, and also of the 410 units, 125 of those are upper story dwellings that will have a lower occupancy, lower impact on the schools. And our really targeted is to house teachers and other, you know, public service type people, which is a need you really have in Moyoc.
Thank you. All right, thank you all for your patience and comments this evening. Any more discussion from the board?
So everything that we discussed prior from looking at the notes from the previous and that night, and that's why I have my notepad here. All that stuff's still pretty much the same, exception of the couple of little things that we jotted tonight.
Yep, no changes. Roy?
And when Commissioner Bowman, who was that, you, did you speak to the? David Ott from N C D O T.
Would anyone, do you guys want to take a, a few minute recess just to ponder before we go into this vote? I mean, I know it's going to be a tough one tonight.
I need to.
Okay, I'm going to call a five minute recess then and we'll, we'll get back up in a few minutes and move forward on this agenda item. Thank you. Call the commissioner meeting back into order again. And again, we're handling old business, P B 19 dash 20, the four farm rezon. And had a minute, give some good deliberation, a few minutes to think. And at this time, I guess it's up to, for it to put forth a motion, one way or the other, on this agenda item.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, Chairman.
Okay.
I move to approve P B 19 dash 20 Flora Farm because the request is consistent with the land use plan because policy H N 3, Crete County shall especially encourage two forms of residential development, each with the objective of avoiding traditional suburban sprawl. Number two, compact mixed use developments or developments near a mixture of uses that promote a return to balance self-supporting community centers, generally served by centralized water and sewer. The types of developments are contemplated for the full service areas identified on the future land use map. Policy C D 1, neighborhood serving commercial districts should be encouraged to locate where a collector or secondary streets intersects with a street of equal or greater size. Appropriately designed, small scale businesses may also be near other neighborhood serving facilities such as schools and parks. Policy H N 5, Crete County recognizes that there are many types of housing in addition to manufactured homes, i.e. mobile homes, that are often overlooked in meeting the affordable housing needs of young families, workers of modest income, senior citizens and others. To encourage affordable housing other than just manufactured housing, Crete County may reserve appropriate areas of the county for stick-built housing forms only and other areas of the county for accessory units in association with a principal structure. Policy E S 2, non-coastal wetlands, including freshwater swamps and inland, non-tidal wetlands shall be conserve, conserve for the important role they play in absorbing floodwaters, filtering pollutants from stormwater runoff, recharging the groundwater table and providing critical habitat for many plant and animal species. Crete County supports the efforts of the U S Army Corps of Engineers in protecting such wetlands through the section for, 404 2, Permit Program for the Clean Water Act, as well as section 401 3, Water Quality Certifications by the State of North Carolina. Policy F S F 1, Crete County shall support and actively engage in advanced planning for the location of new schools. Such locations shall serve to reinforce contiguous growth patterns near existing developments rather than promoting sprawl in more rural locations. New schools shall be viewed as a cornerstone of the communities in which they are located and shall serve to proactively influence growth. Policy S F 2, Crete County encourages offers of land for the sitting of new schools, particularly in conjunction with related community development. Acceptance of such properties shall be based on approval, excuse me, based on approved location and design criteria. If I can add in this, Policy S, and this might be a county attorney question, for, which, and that's why I asked that question at the beginning. If I can add the, how would I, like, public safety, government, is that something I could need to add in this? Added?
Well, these are findings relative to the land use plan. These are not conditions, if that's what you're asking, that you're placing upon the approval. So you're going to need to be sure that you add conditions in your motion.
I'll add the conditions at the end. Okay, thank you. All right, and the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the increase in the number of residential rooftops may bring additional commercial development to Moyoc. Conditions I'd like to add in this would be the 22 acres, if not selected for a school site, could be still, I don't know how to word it.
Set aside for governmental use?
Set aside for governmental use or set aside for, I mean, same thing, public safety, public safety facilities.
Governmental use gives a wider range of uses.
Okay, we're going to go with governmental use then. The, the one condition I'd like to add is the 22 acres could also be used for additional, if needed, governmental use if the school, that was not a chosen school site. So that 22 acres would be either a school site or governmental use.
What about conditions, accepting the conditions that they put forward with phasing?
Yes, and that was the other thing. And from the previous meeting, the, the, a condition added of the, the phasing schedule that they proposed from the June, what was the?
22nd.
June 22nd, meeting the phasing schedule, those conditions to apply. I mean, what was it, I think? I think that's, that's it. Those, those two conditions I'd like to add, the 22 acres for either a school or government or, or mix both and the phasing conditions to apply from the June meeting.
Do you have something, Mike?
Just to make sure you add in your motion that the request. Just to make sure you add in your motion that the request is reasonable and, and in the public interest, and state the reason.
I think he.
Yeah, I did, I read that.
Yeah.
He did.
Just, I mean, since I added those conditions, I'll read that again. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because the increase in the number of residential rooftops may bring additional commercial development to the Moayak area.
Mr. Chairman, with the 22 acres, is that to be purchased?
I don't know.
Because with this being the school, it wasn't going to be giving, it was gonna be a purchase, correct?
I'll, I'll defer to the applicant. I was under the understanding that they were going to give it, is what I think they said at June 22nd.
So, it's either gonna be donated, my condition would be, the 22 acres would be either donated or given, we've done it in the past, for school site, governmental site, or mixed use of both if it's.
Just any governmental use which would cover.
Any governmental use. Any governmental use.
Yep. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. I think we got you on the mic. Thank you.
That's my motion.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion before we call for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, how many ayes do we have? Three. All those opposed?
Aye.
So, it's a three to four. Motion does not carry. Put forward another motion, or this can die for lack of a passing motion. Move for denial. For state reasons. I believe that would be cleaner, would it not, Mr. Attorney? To put forward a motion.
They certainly do that.
For denial. Or does it, does it have to, since that motion did not clear?
That motion denied, you may, you may go to next item on the agenda.
Our motion's coming forward. Okay. All right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business, consideration of annual outdoor tour operator license fee and permits. This is a little weird one. I have to recuse myself because it could affect me financially. Would it be appropriate for me, Mr. Attorney, to maybe remain in the room for a few minutes for any discussion or questions? The board may have me to step out when it actually comes down to a vote, or does this not really matter?
Well, I suppose to the extent that there may, may be a need for the board to make some inquiry as to someone that's in this particular line of work, although it's best practice that, I guess, once the board is discussing a motion, that you do leave the room.
Okay. All right. Well, then I would ask the board to allow me to recuse myself. And I believe we need to do that in a form of a motion. Thank you.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, you guys kick me out when you want to.
Kick you out when you want to.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. So, the next item is the consideration of the annual outdoor tour operator licensing fee payments. And I believe I'll turn that over to our county manager, Ben Secklover.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So, if you remember at the start of the pandemic, there were some, some concerns that these fees were due in May. As we all remember, as we headed into April, the first of May, I mean, we, we still had closed beaches. We didn't know, you know, when that was gonna reopen to visitors. There were concerns over, and this is a, a fee specifically that the county imposes on tour operators. So, the board voted to defer that payment and then take it up after we could see kind of how the season went for those operators. We are now, you know, past the, the end of the traditional tour season. And so, it's time for the board to kind of discuss that item. You all said in September you'd take it back up, which is why I included it on the agenda. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that, that you all may have.
Just to add to that, Mr. Chairman, remember on June 1st, you adopted an amendment to the county's Code of Ordinances that provided for a deferral of the license fee required by the ordinance until September 1st, 2020. So, that, that time has now passed. So, the deferral is no longer effective unless you take any additional action to delay or rescind the requirement of license fee payment for the year 2020. It is now due.
Commissioner, did you have a question?
Can I ask Mr. White a couple of questions?
White, is that eighteen, Carolla Drive? Carolla? Yes, ma'am.
With your business, are y'all still doing the tour operations now, or has it completely stopped?
No, we're still open for business. My personal business will reopen, will remain open through November. Just kind of weather dependent on that, but generally November is when we shut down for the season.
Are the other horse tour operators still operating?
Yes, ma'am, they are.
And do you think your business has fell off tremendously, or?
I'm about 25% this year due to COVID. So, opening late definitely affected us. So, we're, we're about 25% right now. Don't know what will happen, you know, with, the, the season's definitely longer, more intense, I guess, would be a better word for September. As long as I don't have two weeks long nor'easters anyway. And so, it is, it may, it may, some of that may come back. I certainly don't anticipate recouping the entire amount of that. So, you can take that how you will, but I think about 20%. When the dust settles, it'll be probably 20%. We'll recoup some of our, our losses from the spring when the dust settles. And that's just me personally. I'm not talking to other owners. I know that their businesses are down as well, but they don't, obviously aren't gonna tell me what they're down.
That was my next question. Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
So, did you reduce your capacity on your trucks because of social distancing, and is that part of it? I mean, I know.
Yeah, I absolutely did. Yeah. We, we, we normally would see, you know, 13, my trucks will hold 15. So, we'd see 13 to 15 people generally. And this year, it's, it's, you know, we're down to 10 if we're lucky because we have to kind of move people around and rearrange them. So, that's, that's a little different animal this year. That is what it is, I guess. Lucky to be in business.
And Ben, how much do we bring in annually with tour operations?
With the, the permit fees?
Correct.
Trying to look through you, sorry. So, we bring in roughly $30,000 in permit fees. Right now, that is bud, that revenue is budgeted to go to the Carova Roads District. So, use a little bit of it to upkeep the park in Carova. But most, most if not all of it goes to the Carova Roads District now.
Considering the bizarre year this has been, is that something that could be offset or by OCTAX?
I mean, so, gosh, yes and no. And let me explain that answer. What you would have to do is do a budget amendment, budgeting revenue, more OCTAX going in. So, like this year, you budgeted 30,000 of OCTAX money going. You'd have to budget 60,000 to cover the permit fees that we did not collect last year. So, that's the other oddity of this. It's, it, it exists in separate fiscal years.
Right. So, with that in mind, is it reasonable to suggest that we probably made above that from an occupancy tax perspective?
Yes, I'd, I'd say that the OCTAX is gonna exceed even the, even the, the new budget numbers for this year by, by more than, by more than an additional $30,000.
So. I'm.
I kind of know where you're going.
I'd love to make a motion if anyone would like to hear it.
I'll, I'll step out.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's, okay. I think I know where you're going. Let me just, okay, go ahead.
Um, just to, to clarify, and I'm gonna look to the county attorney here. What they would need to do is actually amend the, the Code of Ordinances for giving last year's permit fee.
You would need to amend the Code of Ordinances to rescind the requirement for a permit fee for fiscal year, well.
Twenty.
Yep. For, for, for 20, for 2020.
Calendar year 2020 because they, yeah, so.
That need to be a motion tonight, or would that need to be prepared?
I think we should bring that back to you in written form. It's your next motion for you to act on.
So, a couple of my thoughts, right? These guy, I mean, I know the tour operators have employees and they've been keeping them running. And I've seen them. They're, you know, doing the best they can, but it has been noticeable. He's running with 10 people. That's kind of unusual to me because I see the Humvees, which can carry a lot more than 12. And they are, you can see through them, which is not, that's not normal. So, I know these guys have been scrambling. You know, and they're providing a, you know, a tourism service, so, you know, my observation.
No, I would agree. I mean, they, thankfully, they were able to stay in business and keep their people employed. But his 25% is probably in part because of he can only put eight or 10 people on the, and I'm sure it's probably gonna be the same with the other ones. So, it'd probably be fair to say that all the tour operators probably, I mean, that 20, 25% is probably a realistic number, I would think, across the board. I mean, I'm just guessing out there, but if, if one, then they all gotta be pretty close.
Yeah, I, I don't have the information to answer that question, but it seems like a logical assumption.
Oh, yeah, because I mean, if they, if they're following the, you know.
They started late and they're not carrying as many.
Is there any other questions for staff?
I mean, the beach had a record-breaking year. I mean, I know the, the social media, or the social, not media, that's God, that's stuff that's old too, but the social distancing factor was something we talked about. And I worked beach duty 10 days this summer and the tours, the different tours, and I don't know who owns which. I know which ones are Bob's because they say Bob's Wild Horse Tours out of them. They were busy, and I do think the vehicles weren't as packed in. They were busy. Were 100% booked up for the rest of September, 100% booked up for October. I don't know how much he staffing he has when you lose college kids or whatever. So, speak, you know, I mean, the beach had a record-breaking year. It's the, the best that they ever had. I mean, I, I get the social distancing, the orders and stuff like that have to factor in some kind of play to it. The, probably count for that 25% number. But I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know. Other businesses, other businesses might be down if you're in the restaurant because you have 50%, and they still have to pay their taxes. And, and, and I like Bob. I'm not like trying to jump on Bob or the horse tour guys. I'm not, it's not a, a that thing. But the, the perception of, you know, the other guys, you know, we all that sit in this room have to pay our taxes. We all that sit in this room have to pay sales tax if we buy a drink and a bag of chips. You know, I mean, are we gonna? I don't know what's the word I want to look for, but I'm just gonna be blunt because I usually am. How much, you know, are we looking at if we do something like that, the percentages or whatever? And I'm not for or against either or, but I mean, we're gonna, you know, whatever decision I go by, if people want to say something about it, they can pay $144 and they can run against me. But, you know, I mean, are we gonna look at the, there's gonna be a lot of backlash. I mean, and it's not his fault because that's what he does for a living. But I don't know. I, I get it's the, I mean, how much, how much are we looking at if the fees were reduced, you know?
Well.
25 to 25%.
25%.
Well, I think I'm gonna ask you in a moment if there's any recommendations or a motion from this board and how we need to proceed with this.
And like I said, I'm not trying, I'm just looking at the sword both ways of.
Do we have any?
Excuse me, what are the fees that they pay, Ben?
Thank you, Ms. Kitty.
I'm gonna look that one up. I can't. Yeah. And so, it depends on the number of vehicles, and I can't tell you how many which companies, how many each company has, so.
It's 950.
But 950 per vehicle.
Yeah.
I did hear today the tail end of a news story, and I believe it came out of Derrick County, that they're anticipating the tourist season to remain strong up to Thanksgiving because schools are shut down. And with the ability to zoom with virtual schooling, they can come on vacation and still do their virtual schooling. So, they're anticipating occupancy and tourism to stay up.
That, every indication is, and I live it, every indication is we're not done till probably Thanksgiving. I think that's an accurate assumption.
All right. Do we have any other questions regarding this for staff? If not, then I'm gonna ask this board for a recommendation or a motion on how to proceed.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I move that we suspend the tour fees for the wild horse tours this year based upon not only the hardship that they endured as an industry to start off with, but as a viable contributor to our county's resources and an attraction that they actually, that they bring in.
And for that to be official, we'll have to bring a, an actual.
Understood.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
So, are we, are you gonna bring another motion? Are we gonna vote on this twice? That's.
We'll, we'll actually bring a, an ordinance amendment that will not require payment of license fees for this calendar year.
So, is this motion directing that, or are we, I mean, I'm, before I vote, I just want to know what I'm voting on.
And that's the way staff would take it.
Yeah, I believe the motion is to, to suspend all the fees for this year to the wild horse tours.
To direct the staff, okay, all right.
Where the total, I know it was 950. What's the total?
30,000.
Approximately 30,000. I, I can't give you, I mean, I can look it up in our financial software, but around 30.
Kevin, motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Have any further questions? All in favor? Oh, excuse me, sir, hold up.
I was gonna say, I think Kevin's correct. We might have a lot of fallback from five run a restaurant.
Yeah, do I want to come back to this if I have? The only thing I would respond to that with is they, every restaurant that I've been to, good luck trying to eat there. It's, their takeout has been booming and their dining in has been booming. And I would suggest, I don't know that they pay a fee every year to operate in their, in their company. Do restaurants pay any kind of a tourism tax to exist? This is a, one of the few industries that is actually, and we target specifically to help with the Roto Keep. So, that's number one. Number two, if there was any other similar entity out there, they could have come before this board and asked for all the identical type considerations.
And they're still paying their sales tax. They're still paying their sales tax out there, so.
Can I ask another question?
You may.
So, when you bring, when you bring back the, the language and the text amendment, will we have like more, can we get harder numbers to make a better decision, like?
So, so, yeah, my, what I would suggest is that we bring forward the projected revenue shortfall that occurred, if you, if you do waive it. And then a budget amendment to make up that revenue from occupancy tax or some other thing so that these services that depend on these revenues aren't, don't have a shortfall.
So, the, the roads would still have a source of funding to make sure they're maintained, even if we suspend?
That's where the funds go.
Right. No, but if we suspend it, there's still revenue.
Available.
At, at the board's pleasure, I would bring a plan of revenue so that.
Correct.
To make sure that those revenues that aren't paid directly by the off, or by the tour operator fees would be covered by some other source.
Okay.
Okay.
I got a question.
Yes, sir, go.
Do we know if these businesses are covered by business interruption insurance?
I have no, no idea, sir. I mean, I, I mean, I, I can't tell you.
The PPP?
That's not gonna, that's not gonna help you with reduced capacity on the tour because you're now up and up.
You've lost business because we were shut down from COVID. That would be a legitimate business interruption.
On the front end, but not during a 50% capacity situation. In other words, a mandatory evacuation where that's closed, then that applies to rentals as well. But I. And it's, it's, denial of use is typically the phraseology that's used in that.
Do we have any other further questions from the board? If not, we have a motion and a second. Ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Three to three.
Three to three. Well, and we cannot ask the chairman to come in and vote on this now, so I guess.
Can we make another vote?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, can, can I get that, that vote for the vote?
Aye. All the ayes, raise your hand. Paul, myself, okay, and all the nays and.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move that we continue this discussion till maybe the first week in November, when we can have a little better grasp on what the numbers are and discuss it at that time.
And do a percentage.
And do a percentage.
And get the, the numbers before we vote.
Do it on a percentage basis.
Yeah, do it on a percentage basis, because I think that's what we first decided we were going to do, it would be a sliding percentage.
So based on the, the vote count, then, I said, attorney, then, so this, this would die then?
Yes, the, the motion failed.
Motion failed, okay, so, and I'll ask for another recommendation, I believe, Mr. Etheridge, you were going to-
Make the motion to continue until the first week of November? I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further questions about continuation till November?
The county manager, hold on.
That's for the chief.
I do.
Okay.
I was waiting for the second.
Okay.
For discussion.
We did first and second, questions now.
Got a second? Okay, so mine would be, they had a payment due September 1st.
Payment is now due?
Due, now, yes.
So now you're saying we're going to move it to November, that makes the payment pass it.
So either way, we will bring, if this passes, we would bring a ordinance amendment to you at the next meeting that would defer it until 1st of November, probably until whatever the date of the first meeting is in November. The, the other part of that, I just want to make, make sure that I can tell you how much revenue the county is down, I mean, we have luckily a pretty good resource to tell you what the business is down, but I'm not going to have any way to-
They're not going to give you that, yeah, they're not going to freely pay you what-
Yeah, so that, that-
And we have no ability to get that result.
It's not a public record like we talked about.
I understand that, but if they're interested, they should give us some idea, rough idea, or whatever. So it's just trying to be fair to everybody.
How many, that's fine, how many businesses do we charge touring fees, tourist fees to? How many other industries are out there?
Other than, I think the bulk of them are horse tours, but I think there might be one other.
What's that?
I guess, suppose you count occupancy tax for those that rent property.
Anyway.
Okay, any other-
This is the unique industry, is what I'm trying to get. You can't, you can't broadcast it all the way out there and go, well, anyway, just a-
Okay, any other questions on the motion set by Commissioner?
So before we vote, we are, the motion is asking for the informations, implications for the numbers to be presented at the next meeting, and to defer the payment to October, until November 1st?
I believe the county, we have to, we have to bring a document before this board the next meeting, because the payment is due now, we have to have a document that, that defers that, I believe, that payment.
So that's-
That was due now until a specific timeframe.
So we will discuss this again at the next meeting about whether to defer it.
We will be voting on it, on a, on a ordinance, correct or wrong, the next meeting to defer this.
Yes.
And then after that, we'll be voting then-
Get to meet again.
To, to, do we want to defer it for good, or are we going to back? So it'll be, so, that's currently what's going to happen next meeting, we're going to be voting on an ordinance presented before us to defer the payments due September right now.
Well, 2020 is some of the unusual.
So that's the, that's the motion, any other questions regarding this motion?
If that motion fails, we can still make another motion.
Absolutely. All right, no other questions, then I ask the board for a vote, all in favor of the motion to have a document brought before us to defer the payments to a later date?
I'll, I-
All opposed?
Nay.
No. All right, so that, that motion dies?
Kitty.
So I'll ask the board for a new motion then.
I'd like to make a motion that-
Wait, I need that vote.
Okay, all the, all the, all the-
Commissioner's report, and Commissioner, okay.
Okay, and, okay. So that second motion failed, so I'll ask the board if we have a new motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we charge the horse tours 25% of what they normally pay.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions regarding this new motion?
I have one other-
Attitude.
With, I would ask that you would amend that motion to say fees not covered by that 25% that the county would make up through OCTAX, the remainder of those revenues, so that we get the full contribution to the Roads District.
Like Mr. Belmont said, amend my motion.
And I'm going to ask the same question again, so what we're really making a motion for is for staff to bring, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Language, would we redo, would reduce the 25%, and then the addition will be made up through another source. Yes, sir, Mr.-
So just for my clarification, are we saying 25% of what was due, or a reduction of 25%?
Due.
What was due?
So only 25% of what would have been due under-
25% reduction.
And the rest of it should go to the-
I'm sorry, would you say 25% reduction, or only 25% of what was due?
What was due.
Oh, okay, I want to clarify that.
That's-
Okay, no, that was for my clarification, okay. Okay, does everybody understand the motion, any other questions regarding that? Okay, I'll call for a vote on this motion, all in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I agree.
Okay, then the motion carries.
I'll give the-
Thank you. Would you go out there, wake them up first, okay?
Wish I could have been here for that, it sounds like it was entertaining. All right, next item up tonight, Soil and Water, 2005 J. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Dylan Lloyd to come forward and give you a little more information, but the gist of this is, this is a grant that the Soil and Water Conservation Group would like to go after under DEQ Water Quality Management, and it's a planning grant where they, they create a plan so that they can start to figure out some ways to improve or maintain water quality in our waterways. So I'll let that, the reason for you tonight, there's a $2,500 match, if you all approve this, then we'll bring a budget amendment at the next meeting with the Senate. With that, Dylan Lloyd.
All right.
Thank you, Ben. As brevity is the soul of wit, and eight is coming up on the clock real fast, I'll be very quick. This is 205 J. Grant, where you go through a study in order to identify key areas of water impairment. Right now, we have five objectives, one of them is to identify and establish these areas for protecting the regional water quality, another is to identify key locations to monitor, establish a baseline for water quality, third one is to identify and prioritize key, key areas for building resiliency to future storm events, then we're going to identify key locations for best management practices in order to effectively manage stormwater, and last but not least, survey coastlines and identify areas for living shoreline projects. Now, the Almarl Commission and the Resource Conservation and Development Council has worked on these with Prequemans County as well as Pasco Tank, and it's written this right here, about every project that Currituck's been involved in has got anywhere from 1.5 to an 8% return of investment, or eight times, I mean, return of investment on a project. So we basically sub this out to Mark Powell with the ERCND, and he helps us with the application process, and the grant application typically involves things that require a level of technical expertise, and they've been through this before many times, so they walk us through that, and then when you get approved for the 205 J., it's kind of like a golden ticket to apply for a lot of other things. We were just mentioning growth, we had a large, big discussion about growth earlier, and Currituck County is expected to grow to 36,493 residents by 2035, so that's a population increase of about 30%. We also have a 30% increase of visitors and tourism predicted by that same year. So, water quality, we're surrounded by water, it defines who we are, and I think it's important that we move on things like this, and just a little bit of match from the county and my in-kind contributions, which I have told Mark and the council I'd be happy to provide, could go a long way. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions? Do you need a motion from us to move forward, or is this just information?
If I can just get nodding heads, I'll bring a budget amendment at the next meeting.
Nodding heads.
Let me ask a question on it real quick.
Go.
You say, in the northern part of the county, are we defining that geographically from one point to the state line?
Yes, we're looking at the watershed area between the Northwest River, and again, this is based on the, I'll use the term explosive growth we've had in the past 10 years, we're looking at anywhere between the state line and down to the receiving waters, there's the, the tailwaters around Coin Jack Bay up to the Tolls Bay area. So, I mean, it covers a lot of ground, but this would not focus on, you know, things south of that area. But again, we're looking at, you need to define, it's what they call an H U Z zone, and it specifies a specific watershed, identifies a specific watershed, and that's part of the grant application process, they act, they ask you to, you know, be specific, and so I'd like to, you know, say county-wide, but we're, we're kind of targeting some of the problematic areas.
About how far west to the Camden County line?
I'm sorry?
To, how far west to the Camden County line?
West would be about, it would fall short of the highway 168, it would run up the, pretty much within the tributaries, so, no, it probably wouldn't cross 168, we're talking about the Northwest River, we talked about windswept pines earlier, talk about neighborhoods in that area, picture there, down to Coin Jack, and the neighborhoods that are around the sound and the smaller tributaries that come off of a Tolls Creek as well as the Northwest River.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, sir, appreciate it. Okay, next on, on the agenda tonight is consent agenda, any questions, comments, or concerns on anything on the consent agenda?
Make a motion for approval.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Mr. Belmont, it's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, next item is, I'll recess the regular Board of Commissioners meeting and go into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the attorney, with the county attorney, and to preserve attorney-client privilege. I have a second for that. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all for a short meeting.